Thank you for your comments. What do we have next, Ms. Lacy?
Next, we have Steve Akers, who should be able to unmute.
Hi, folks. Can you hear me?
Yeah, we can hear you fine, Mr. Akers. You have about three minutes.
Hi, folks. I don't want to repeat anything that's already been said, but I did, I do appreciate the comments from Chris Sterbaum, Barbara Moss, Betty Rose Nagel, Janice Sorby. So glad that Barbara brought up the petition signatures that I hope you embrace. And I just would encourage to listen to experts and people that really know what they're talking about, Barry Clapper and Jim Rosenbarger's plan. So I ask you to vote no on the, on this U D O. You know, the, the last speaker said it's been an interesting process. He's enjoyed it. That's good. I've enjoyed it to a point, but it's been laborious, you know, for all of us. And I am discouraged as Chris Sterbaum is too, about what's probably going to happen tonight. So I know this has been difficult for all of you. Thank you for your work. I appreciate you all. And we'll stay involved. Thank you very much. And I'm sorry, this is Steve Akers from Park Ridge. Thanks.
Thank you for your comments. Do we have any further participants?
I don't have any additional raised hands at this time. I do have a couple of comments that came in through the chat. The first. My name is Dave Stewart and I live in the Bryant Park neighborhood. I understand that the zoning change of this U D O is not about affordability. Had it been, you would have passed amendment four. I understand that this zoning change had to be rushed through during a pandemic on Zoom because people had, because had people been allowed to see each other in person during this process, the sheer power of that congregation would have stopped this upzoning, just as it was stopped in 2019. I understand that my core neighborhood will be opened up to developers and I understand that the council members who pushed this zoning change through believe that by allowing me and many others to express their concern and their outrage that I and many others will forget about this issue when the next city election occurs. I will not forget, and I believe that many others will also not forget. What remains to be seen is whether we will have enough votes to hold this council accountable in the next election. The next comment is, my name is Linda Stewart and I live in the, and I live in Bryant Park. I am not against the building of plexes. I am against the building of plexes in core neighborhoods. I am for affordable homeownership. Taking away the comprehensive plan is a big betrayal, a betrayal to future potential homeowners because they cannot compete with outside absentee developers. In any city planning, when you give free rein to developers and take away the governmental oversight of safeguards, you are trusting the market and there is absolutely no reason to trust the market when we have evidence that the market is not interested in affordability. I believe that there are three additional individuals who have now raised their hand. Shall I begin to call them?
Yes, please.
The first is Mark's iPad, who should be able to unmute and state their full name for the record.
Hi, my name is Mark Cornet. Can you hear me?
Yes, we can hear you fine.
I'm sorry, I had my hand checked. I don't know what happened there. I don't think what I'll say has, will have any bearing on what's going to happen tonight, but I'd like to state my position anyway. I started my urban design career in 1984 in Boston, Massachusetts. I moved there out of college from an architecture and urban design graduate. And I sold my car. And I saw the city through the eyes of a pedestrian and public transportation user, both in subway and surface buses. I rode my bicycle. It changed my way of thinking about how we use land and why and where things occur, both for living and playing and working. And there's been lots of great books written about all of those things being a part of urbanism. When I moved back to Bloomington, I'm from the Midwest. When I moved back from Bloomington to Bloomington, I was often at odds with the architecture firm that I was working for because I would talk about urbanism. Buildings should face the street. Parking lots go behind. Can we reduce the parking? Can we build more buildings, et cetera, et cetera? And I'm here tonight. And it's really, really unfortunate. The core neighborhoods are getting plowed under, under the guise of large lot, single family zoning, having all kinds of baggage that's negative. The core neighborhoods have never been large lot, single family zoning. They predate zoning by 50 to 60 years, period. They've always been mixed use. We can find evidence of the old local groceries that were embedded in neighborhoods. Churches were embedded in neighborhoods, et cetera, et cetera, et cetera. Bloomington unfortunately, right now is suffering from a lack of more core neighborhoods. We need more, not less. So I am dumbfounded when I can't, you know, can't see why we don't understand protecting the core neighborhoods should be our primary goal. I'm not suggesting that you don't add this so-called missing middle all over the darn place. But there are places to do it. It's not a zoning problem. It's a planning problem. It's a design problem. And I can't believe that we are talking about this as a zoning fix. The first speaker tonight spoke passionately and had several moments of clarity about all the things that he would like to see happening in the neighborhoods. And he thinks that duplexing will fix it.
Mr. Cornet, I'm sorry, your time has been exhausted.
It will not. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Who's next, Ms. Lacy?
Next is next is Lawrence Levy, who should be able to unmute.
Hi, thank you. My name is Lawrence Levy. I live in Bryant Park. The upzoning is madness. Duplexes have nothing to do with race or ethnicity. In cities where there is gentrification, the people in neighborhoods being affected and the progressives in those cities all complain that gentrification happens and destroy cities because the local people in the neighborhoods are ignored and not consulted. Somehow, the people who want duplexes have created a false equivalency that if you're for duplexes, you're for racial justice. And if you're not for duplexes, you're racist. It has nothing to do with that. It has everything to do with some confused misunderstanding about how real estate and supply and demand work. Here in Bloomington, certain members of the city council have publicly stated that they're going to ignore what their constituents want. It is an ugly situation when an elected representative decides to quit representing the constituents and do what they want. That is not progressive. That is small-scale dictatorship. The idea that duplexes and upzoning will cause rental prices and the cost of houses to drop is ridiculous. There is absolutely no empirical evidence for that. In fact, if you do real research through Google and through academic research databases, you will find research that upzoning actually will increase the price of houses. Who's going to create these duplexes? Homeowners who don't want it? Will someone convert their house for market, who, will someone who converts their house after market rate to rent the additions? Or will they somehow take a loss and subsidize the rent for someone else? Who could afford to, to convert all the houses into duplexes? Once a house is converted to duplex, it will increase its value since it will have a source of rental income that will not make house ownership cost less. The only people who will benefit from upzoning are multiple property owners who can afford to make conversions and will charge the market rate because they are profit-making businesses. The council members who are supporting upzoning are unwittingly collaborating with capitalist forces who will profit from renting at market rates, which will, will result in increased rental and home ownership costs. Owners of multiple rental properties are not going to do conversions to rent at below-market rates. The majority of homeowners in each of the corner neighborhoods do not want this. Why would elected officials ignore what the citizens actually want? Most of the shopping and supermarkets are at College Mall and not near the core neighborhoods. It makes more sense to build more housing near College Mall than in the core neighborhoods. Ask yourself, do you want to live in a Bloomington where there's less homeownership and more rentals? Vote no on duplexes. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments, Mr. Levy. Who do we have next, Ms. Lacy?
Next, we have Wendy Bernstein, who should be able to unmute.
I thank you all for enduring this, to me, very painful extended process. I would just like to say that the top-down style of governing brought by our current mayor to Bloomington, I think, has been the beginning of the sense of disenfranchisement and lack of sense of unity on the part of me and many fellow citizens of Bloomington. The U D O process has largely been influenced and controlled by somebody's decision to spend a fortune on very expensive planning consultants who designed the U D O, I believe, that we are dealing with. I know from personal anecdotes and things that the mayor himself has said that he wants to urbanize Bloomington. Using the excuse of suburban sprawl, our city is overrun now with high, high-rise buildings, big massive blocks around the downtown and up and down College and Walnut Streets. This urbanization is what I'm afraid is going to continue to sprawl. And I think duplexes are part of that process of big urbanization efforts within the core. I keep thinking and quoting Joni Mitchell's line, "You don't know what you've got till it's gone." In my strong opinion, protecting the green spaces that do exist, not only in parks, but in some of the lawns and neighborhoods where people are planting food gardens and flower gardens and have lots of trees, that we need that oxygen for our quality of life. And I couldn't agree more with what Lawrence Levy and Mark Cornet have just said. I believe that the cost of living is going to be continually raised by the densification and urbanization of the city, which I think will cause the destruction of core neighborhoods. And I've always used the example of Paris, France in preserving the historic center and putting the high-rises out around the edges and in new communities. And so I hate to see the loss of Bloomington's neighborhoods, which have attracted so many of us here and continue to as long as they survive. Thanks.
Thank you for your comments. Ms. Lacy?
I have, I have one comment in the chat. I, from Constance Glenn, I echo the many who have said that this extremely divisive and accusatory process should have never happened. I fear that the goodwill, energy and wisdom of many citizen, citizens has been squandered. Please vote against the amended U D O. Please take it back to planning and hold community meetings that draw on the expertise of our population rather than outsiders in cities that are completely different in scale and demographics. Please consider that other plans are possible and better and that this input is very valuable for the future of Bloomington. None of this plan makes sense. Ignoring them, ignoring the marketplace greed is truly irresponsible and can only result in a diminished Bloomington with higher rents, housing that's impossible to purchase and greater homogeneity. Connie Cook, Glenn and Jim Glenn.
Thank you. See one, another hand up?
I see.
Please recognize that person.
I will.
Thank you.
This is Jeff Richardson, who should be able to unmute.
Thank you, Heather, and thanks for your patience and calmness throughout all of this process and in monitoring all of us. Thank you. Just a few observations. I think the thoughtful comments by Steve Volan, Councilmember Volan, about framing. And it reminds me, when I moved back here to retire in October of last year, I think this issue was framed sadly as those who were for poor people are those who are against. Those who are, who are for racial equality are those who are against. Those who are classists and those who are not. Happily, I think it evolved. And I think it evolved into a density issue in part because of Jim Sims and others who decided and, and spoke out that this was really more about density. And I think if it had been framed that way early on, this would have been a different kind of conversation. And I think that's a lesson learned. I think the point that Councilmember Flaherty was making about Eleanor Olstrom and Tommy Allison's comments were instructive in part. But it's not just about listening. It's also about engagement. And not only working with Tommy on the council, but in state government and, and many not-for-profit and foundation enterprises. Sometimes it took one to two years to get things ramped up of full engagement and engagement with key stakeholders. So it's not just listening, but it's the engagement part that is also critical. And I think that's another lesson learned. And then I think there's some systemic issues that should be addressed here, not directly related to, but informed by this whole zoning discussion. And that is, what is the relationship between the council and the administration? And what is the dynamic there? And how are you working together as co-equal branches of government? And I think there's some systems changes that perhaps are in order. And maybe this will lend itself at the end of this process for some introspection. After living 22 years in Washington DC, I would often ask elected officials, knowing what you know now, what might you have done differently? So I hope this is an occasion to do that. And let's not just look at how the council members vote tonight, although that's important. But let's see how we act on some of these issues like affordability, equity and inclusion moving forward. I thank all of you for all of your hard work and patience. And I wish you the best on this vote, but also on future endeavors. And I look forward to working with each and every one of you. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments, Mr. Richardson. Ms. Lacy, I see no more hand, raised hands. Do you have any chat messages?
I do not.
I think I just saw one more hand raised.
I see two.
Yes, thank you.
Shall I recognize them?
Yes, please.
Okay. The first is the person with a screen name Vinley, who should be able to unmute and state their full name for the record.
Hello, are you there?
Sorry, sorry, I forgot to unmute. Okay. Oh, thank you. Thank you. Okay. This is Wendy Brish. I'm a resident of Elm Heights, have been for a couple of generations. I think the lack of comments tonight is telling. I think it's because people are very discouraged. I know I am. This has been really difficult for those of us whose neighborhoods are already transitioning. And I think that's why you've heard from us. I think the city has come up with a U D O that the majority of Bloomington residents are opposed to. It will harm the integrity of neighborhoods close to the university. And it will bring no affordability, no equity, no diversity, no sustainability, but rather division, strife, distrust, fear, more rentals and higher housing costs. I disagree with Matt, with, with Councilmember Flaherty. The council members that are voting against their constituent switches, wishes, expressed overwhelmingly in opposition to the plexes, but rather with our ideology and the concept of a dense and urbanized Bloomington that few of its residents want, are not concerned with the wishes and needs of their constituents, especially the resident homeowners. They seem to, we seem to be rather an annoyance and a speed bump in the rush for urbanization and unwanted congestion. This has been an exercise in domination, not in democracy. According to studies, people living in dense housing are more stressed. They have worse health outcomes. Their children do worse in school and they have more mental illness. Density is not always a good thing. I don't see how more market-rate student rentals are going to help anything. We have plenty of them. We can fill the cores with rental plexes and never touch the local student demand enough to bring down prices. We don't all live on the west side, as the organized group of plex proponents do. They have not experienced the student density and accompanying disruption that neighborhoods near the university have. These neighborhoods desperately need to be protected from more student rental density in order for any diversity to survive. If you want to show your goodwill to homeowners and permanent Bloomington residents, a good next step would be to come up with a way to protect the remaining available housing in Bloomington from transitioning to market-rate expensive student plexes in the vulnerable and tipping neighborhoods, which are so attractive to investors. Some blocks may not even be salvageable now. This upzoning without protection will push them right off the cliff into rental student monoculture. Even a few plexes in these areas will be too much because we know they will be expensive, they will be rented by the bedroom and they will be rented to more students. Is that okay with you? Because I can't really see that you care about it and that concerns me greatly. Other college towns have, as a result of local housing studies that found that student rentals were causing housing prices to store, soar and neighborhoods to degrade, instituted caps on rentals in single-family neighborhoods at a maximum of 30%. And instituted 700-foot buffers between any student rentals, including existing ones, because that's what it takes to preserve the integrity of the neighborhoods. We are so far beyond that.
Miss Brish, I'm sorry, you exhausted your time.
Okay, thank you. I hope that you will consider us in the future. And please vote against the U D O.
Thank you for your comments. Who do we have next, Ms. Lacy?
Next, we have Russ Skiba, who should be able to unmute.
Thank you, Ms. Lacy. I appreciate all of your help throughout this process. I also deeply appreciate the work of council members Sue Scambolari, Ron Smith, Susan Sandberg and Dave Rallo, who have throughout this process not only carefully considered all of the evidence before them, but have treated the citizens and residents and their own constituents with respect. This has been a long and extremely disappointing process that, as Joe and Wes Lee and Chris Sterbaum so eloquently stated, has deeply shaken the belief in the tradition of participatory democracy that has for so long characterized Bloomington. A number of questions remain. Why was this proposal reintroduced less than a year after both the community and the city council decisively rejected the same proposal? Why were two-thirds of every meeting conducted by the planning department rolling out this proposal devoted to a top-down presentation of the upzoning proposal while residents were allowed only a few minutes to respond at each meeting? Why were participants in those meetings told that their questions would all be posted when they were not posted at all for several months? And even then, only a small handful of citizen questions were posted or answered. Why did the Plan Commission hold a straw vote on the Plex Amendment before any citizens had given input, providing a clear signal to those who are waiting to testify that the votes of the Plan Commission were already decided and that citizen input was essentially irrelevant? What was the rush between October and now to ram this through on a rushed basis, despite pleas from citizens throughout the community to take a pause to more carefully consider a variety of options that could truly address the critically important issues of racial equity, affordability and sustainability? Why did the mayor and the Plan Department again and again claim that the introduction of plexes in neighborhoods throughout the city was necessary to achieve the goals of the comprehensive plan regarding affordability and equity? Why did they change their tune and attempt to convince the community only last night that this was never about affordability and equity? Why did the part, Planning Department staff twice claim that members of the community had spread misinformation about conditional versus by right usage and about housing availability without identifying the data that she considered misinformation or presenting any data to support the claim that the Plan Department was able to rebut that information? Again, I thank those of the city council who have listened to citizens in this community and respected them and not called them names. And I see this not as the end of the battle for whether we have plexes in town, but as the beginning of the recognition that it will be necessary for the citizens of this community and your constituents to fight for the reintroduction of democracy in Bloomington. Thank you.
Thank, thank you, Mr. Skiba, for your comments. Who's next, Ms. Lacy?
Next, we have the person with the screen name Eric, who should be able to unmute and state their full name for the record.
Thank you. My name is Eric Oost and I thank you for allowing me to speak again this evening. I'll be brief. The dynamics of this process, although arduous, have been a demonstration that our community is interested in the topic of housing. The scope of agreement revealed throughout these council meetings is significant. And this broad community engagements presents us with a profoundly important opportunity. So I respectfully request that the city council and city administration actively engage members of our community in progressive steps towards effectively and sustainably creating and facilitating housing for all people. I also would like to take this opportunity to thank all council members for your good work and service to our community. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments. You have any more, Ms. Lacy? Saying not, oh, I'm sorry.
I'm terribly sorry.
No, no, you're, no. You're fine. Go ahead, please.
Peter Bogdanoff, who should be able to unmute.
Hi, again, I will say my comments about, in reference to what I said earlier and what the responses were. I said, demonstrate that you're not evil. And response was, I'm not evil. Demonstrate, please, that you're not evil, that you are thinking not just of your own ideology, your own thoughts, your own thinking what Bloomington, this ideal Bloomington should be and not actually what it is. And ignoring the lessons of the past, looking to lessons of the future that don't exist or looking to other towns or cities, huge, much bigger and vastly different circumstances that for the most part, this increase in density and desire to make things more dense and more environmentally better and such and such and so on and so on with the ideology, but actually making the place unlivable. Did you ever want to live in Seattle, in, in the dense, in the places or, or Chicago or, or these, or New York City where you have this density and, and people walk, you know, people didn't, if they wanted to live in a dense metro, no, metropolis, they would have gone to someplace else, not to Bloomington, Indiana. And and, but if you're, if you insist on going your own way, go your own way, but you're not going to remain in office. That's for sure. And this, and, and people are not going to take this just sitting down. And if Bloomington, if, if, if democracy in Bloomington is so bad that you feel that you can get away with this kind of thing, there you go. I urge you vote not to vote for this, vote no for the whole idea. Thank you very much. Bye-bye.
Thank you for your comments, Ms. Lacy.
Next, we have Pam Weaver. This is a different caller. It's a different person on this screen name who can now state their name for the record.
Hey, this is Dave Weaver. I'd just like to add my voice to the conversation to say, please vote yes to the amended language so that we can get on with the business of adding some much-needed density to Bloomington. And also to show, you know, some of the detractors that this is good for the city and, and the sky does not fall. So thank you all for your hard work and I look forward to a yes vote.
Thank you for your comments. What do you have, Ms. Lacy?
I don't see any more raised hands and there are no more messages in chat.
Okay, thank you. Seeing now, we'll return to council. For final comments on ordinance 21-23 as amended. Do we have any takers? See, Councilmember Flaherty.
Yes, thank you. I've largely shared my views on many aspects of this over the course of our several
on many aspects of this over the course of our several-week consideration of ordinance twenty-one, twenty-three and its amendments. Excuse me, I'm still getting over my cold. There are, of course, you know, much deeper conversations to be had, and I've been having these conversations with many residents over months and years now, and I will continue to have those conversations. I appreciate the passion for housing and the variety of issues we've been talking about from all community members, even though there are disagreements, of course, on various aspects of policy. I definitely want to thank the many members of the public who have engaged with this process in any form, city staff for their hard work over the last eight or nine months, the Plan Commission, all of my council colleagues, and of course, council and clerk staff. I don't want to dwell. Well, I shall just leave that. I do think this is an important step forward for Bloomington and to reallow some small-scale missing middle housing that matches the historic form, character, and development patterns of Bloomington is important. And again, this is the most incremental and small step forward of that type, much, much reduced from what was initially considered when the when the Planning Department began this conversation nine months ago, eight or nine months ago. I believe the empirical evidence is strong that this type of housing plays an important role in helping us meet our sustainability, affordability, and inclusion goals. It's really far too detailed to go into in debate or council comment, but I did quote affordability statistics last night that point to how how much deeper moderate income affordability is provided by by missing middle housing as opposed to detached, single-family housing. And I'm happy to continue the conversation about all aspects of that sustainability, inclusion, et cetera, at my monthly constituent meetings. And and really any other way I can find to meet with folks to discuss these things. I appreciated Jeff Richardson's comment about engagement, and I very much agree, and engagement with constituents is a very important part of service for me. This particular ordinance and the reintroduction of small-scale missing middle housing is, of course, not a panacea, nor is it the only tool we have used or will use to help meet our community housing needs and tackle the challenges we have. Dave Warren and Kathy Crabtree both mentioned a variety of promising areas for us to continue to develop into programs and policies. As a member of the council's Housing Committee, I look forward to working on these policy solutions and inviting all members of the public to help us as we as we consider them. Finally, I think, as I stated previously, this this incremental change is very much a middle ground among diverse community views. I think it's well supported by our Comprehensive Plan and Climate Action Plan, as well as smart growth principles generally, which are all backed by our plans. So thank you very much again, and I'll be voting yes on ordinance twenty-one, twenty-three.
Thank you, Councilmember Flaherty. Do you have any further comments? Final comment from council members. Councilmember Piedmont Smith.
Yes, this has been a very difficult issue, and I I have heard a lot of good arguments from both sides, and I respect that everybody that I've heard from has the best interests of the community at heart. From the research that I have done, I think duplexes are a good idea in our residential neighborhoods. And I think it's this ordinance is a good step forward in allowing duplexes and no longer favoring the most expensive form of housing, which is single-family detached housing. I want to remind everybody that we have, through the amendment process, very much modified the proposal that came to us from the Plan Commission. Duplexes are now conditional use. There must be a neighborhood meeting as part of that process, and the conditional use will be held, will be considered at a Board of Zoning Appeals meeting, another public body. There is now a maximum of fifteen duplexes in the whole city. There is a hundred and fifty-foot separation required between duplexes. And of course, as was in the ordinance from the beginning, there will be a report in six months, that every six months so that we can monitor the situation. So I think this is a good compromise, and I will be voting for it.
Thank you very much for your comments. Any comments from council members? Councilmember Smith?
Thank you, President Sims. It's been a tough issue. A lot of, lot of great information, a lot of good discussion, a lot of good debate. Crisis we're having really in the community is an affordable housing crisis for the missing middle and for persons with low income. You know, I support affordable housing. The U D O, as amended here, it's better than it was. We had a chance to make it better, but those amendments were defeated for affordability. I was stunned that the mayor brought this back after it was defeated at the end of two thousand nineteen. And I was stunned by the actions of the Plan Commission that kind of punted in our direction. And I'm kind of stunned that sometimes we're voting against our constituent wishes. I'm very concerned that we have too many rentals in Bloomington already, and all I can think of is that this is going to make more rentals because I just don't really believe that there's going to be very many that will turn into owner-occupied, which I would love. I was stunned by the U D O in its current form. It's allowing nine hundred beds that are mostly oriented towards students at Kmart. It's it's not helpful for affordability or the the missing middle. It's just going to add more rentals. Additionally, let me say that one of the ways we can really deal with this is if the city would devote a large portion of the twenty-three million American Rescue Funds to affordability and the missing middle. And we could do an awful lot of money and impact a lot of people in great ways with twenty million. I haven't heard much of that. So in response to all the constituents out there who have really said, you know, about eighty percent of them, that they really don't like this idea and that we need to pull back and think about it again, I I just can't support this. So thank you.
Thank you, Councilmembers. Do we have any further?
I have my hand up. Yeah, I'm sure we're on different screens. It's hard.
Well, yes, please go ahead.
Okay, I'll go first, if that's okay.
Again, I think has caused quite a bit of pain, and we have work to do. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Rallo.
Thank you, Mr. President. I agree with Councilmember Sandberg. If this U D O revision proceedings appeared as though it was a broken process, it's because it demonstrably was. I think the primary flaw occurred when the decision was made to deviate significantly from the Comprehensive Plan, which is our guiding document on zoning and development. Attempts were made to claim that this wasn't the case, that the plan actually supports Plex zoning in all single-family homes. But this argument consists of cherry picking parts of the plan but ignoring others. You may read sections that explicitly discourage Plexing within neighborhoods for yourself in the addendum to Amendment One. I have a few, such as existing core neighborhoods should not be the focus of the city's increasing density. Avoid placing these high-density forms in single-family neighborhoods. The conversion of dwellings to multifamily or commercial uses should be discouraged in neighborhoods. And there are others. These instructions from our guiding document are just simply ignored. Nowhere does it indicate we should blanket remove single-family zoning from Bloomington. Rather, the Comprehensive Plan, as described in Amendment One, directs us where to use density along corridors, arterials, just adjacent to village centers. If the blanket upzoning of all Bloomington was seen as a worthy goal, why didn't the administration and the proponents pursue amending the Comprehensive Plan first? The plan itself indicates that it may be necessary to update it from time to time. I suspect that the decision was made that it would be too onerous. Better to simply ignore parts of the plan and cherry pick those parts that seemingly supported broad brush-up zoning. Bad process leads to bad policy, and that is where we are today. We fortunately have a limit on the number of duplexes of fifteen per year for now and a buffer between that is limited to two years, and I thank my colleagues for voting for Amendment Three. It is a shame we did not at least try to implement affordability in these plexes since we have so few tools at our disposal. Ironically, a primary argument for plexes was for affordability, but that was later abandoned as the desire for of expediting the conversions of single-family homes to rentals became the greater priority. And they will be rentals. No compelling evidence exists otherwise. This proposed conversion of two rentals occurs in a market where sixty-six percent of housing units in our community are already rentals. Single-family homes are highly sought after. Why act to reduce something we desperately need, single-family homes, and convert them to rentals? Won't this drive up costs further? And if the intent is to truly to make a dent in housing needs by conversion, then we are really talking about hundreds, if not thousands, of homes being converted. Is this the desire Bloomington residents? What effect will this have on neighborhoods? And all of this debated at height of the pandemic.
Councilmember Rallo, can you finish up?
Yes, and where I began with questions that remain unanswered. Why are we disregarding our guiding planning document? Why are we converting single-family homes to apartments, reducing the housing form that we need? Why are we deregulating zoning that gives tremendous profit incentive for private capital to invest in this conversion?
Thank you, Councilmember.
Neighborhoods that will likely drive prices higher.
Councilmember Rallo.
I'll be voting no on ordinance twenty-one, twenty-three in the revised U D O. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Bollner.
Thank you. I appreciated Betty Rosenegel's statement just now, but if newcomers who've been here only two years have a lot to share, too, that includes students. Many claims of fact have been made in the heat of this process. I made some, too. We all recognize that it was not logistically possible for everyone to fully vet every claim made by either side or to vet the credentials of those making the claims. I regret that the three-minute limit per comment we placed on ourselves in final debate prevented us from more fully addressing the very many issues that the public wishes us to address. But I respected everyone and listened to everything said, all my colleagues did. It was the arguments against this ordinance that I found insufficiently persuasive. Opponents were not ignored. They were disagreed with. While opponents were insulted by proponents of the ordinance, they never acknowledged that there were some fellow opponents who were no less insulting. More importantly, they continue to be in disbelief at others with whom they agree on so much could come to such different conclusions as they did than or than they did. They were so unprepared for being disagreed with that they declared themselves insulted and unheard, as if only their viewpoint mattered. Several of my colleagues unfortunately echo this false equivalence at times. Regarding Ms. Moss's extraordinary statement about the petition against this ordinance, the community is not people who show up. The community is everyone. I don't only represent the people who speak. I represent- I represent fourteen thousand constituents, whether they show up or not. I've lived in this community for thirty-five years. I live in a single-family home in Elm Heights. I don't own any rentals. I turned a rental into an owner-occupied house, and yet I disagree with the opponents of ordinance twenty-one twenty-three. And I shouldn't have to justify my vote with my bona fides. In order to resolve our political differences, it's incumbent upon us to avoid appeals to emotion. If someone says this vote is personal for me, then if I disagree with them, I'm personally insulting them. This is the primary reason Robert's rules exists, to make sure we separate the issues from the people discussing them. It's a sign of how emotional the appeal is for opponents that they darkly intimated the hand of the development community behind elected supporters of plexes. They asserted that the process was unfair and undemocratic. The city followed the extensive process prescribed by state statute. It's not the city's fault that opponents didn't fully understand it. And the administration published its plans well in advance. They started shopping the U D O changes at the beginning of November. The council alone has spent weeks debating it in April and May. The plan commission is duly appointed. The council and mayor are duly elected. Those who oppose these decisions must work within the existing processes that council itself must observe. Finally, opponents claimed to have been disenfranchised by this process, but we literally are a representative democracy. Those who opposed plexes have wanted it to be a direct democracy where everything is decided by referendum, and whoever knows and or can afford to show up makes each decision. If they want that.
Councilmember Volan, can you finish up?
About that too. That concludes my remarks. I will be supporting ordinance twenty-one twenty-three. Thank you.
Thank you very much. I will be supporting ordinance twenty-one dash twenty-three as well as amended. From the beginning, and whatever group or constituency that I've talked to, I've always strived to be collaborative and compromise to end up in the middle of the role between the two extremes. I'm glad that we will have an opportunity to review the results of these decisions and to adjust as we, as a group, deem necessary. I want to thank the city council attorney and administration and his staff. I'd like to thank city clerk and her staff. I'd like to thank planning and transportation staff. I'd also like to thank my council colleagues. I really appreciate your flexibility through the time that we've dedicated to this particular piece of legislation. And we have a little bit more to go, but so far up to this point. Also, your flexibility on the multiple special sessions that I have been compelled to schedule so that we can get through this legislation in as timely a manner as possible. But most importantly, I want to thank the participating public regardless of the level at which you chose to participate. Finally, what I'd like to say, I heard a couple of times in public comments, mention the culture of Bloomington. I would like to thank that the culture of Bloomington, as it were, is being seen through the lens of multicultural population. If that is not the case, then I wish someone would please explain and define what the culture of Bloomington is. Thank you. Seeing no more comments. We call the question on ordinance twenty-one dash twenty-three as amended. Will the clerk please call the roll?
Councilmember Rosenbarger?
Yes.
Scamblory?
Yes.
Sims?
Yes.
Flaherty?
Yes.
Piedmont Smith?
Yes.
Smith?
No.
Sandberg?
No.
Rallo?
No.
Volan?
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you. Ordinance twenty-one dash twenty-three as amended, has been adopted six to three. Mr. Parliamentarian, I do believe we have more legislation for this evening.
Yes, Mr. President, a move that ordinance twenty-one twenty-four be introduced and read by the clerk by title and synopsis only.
Second.
Thank you. Will the clerk please call the roll?
Yes. Sorry. Councilmember Scamblory?
Yes.
Sims?
Yes.
Flaherty?
Yes.
Piedmont Smith?
Yes.
Smith?
Yes.
Sandberg?
Yes.
Rallo?
Yes.
Volan?
Yes.
And Rosenbarger?
Yes.
Thank you. That motion passes. It's been moved and seconded that ordinance twenty-one dash twenty-four be introduced and read by the clerk by title and synopsis only. Will the clerk please read?
Yes, ordinance twenty-one twenty-four to repeal and replace the official zoning map with entitled twenty of the Bloomington Municipal Code entitled Unified Development Ordinance. Synopsis is as follows. This ordinance repeals and replaces the official zoning map incorporated by reference into the U D O.
Councilmember Flaherty?
Mr. President, I move that ordinance twenty-one twenty-four be adopted.
Second.
Thank you. It's been properly moved and seconded. Do we have, what do we have here from the city? Is it Ms. Scanlon? All right, thank you. Thank you. Would you care to present?
Yes, just one moment. Let me share my screen. Okay. Thank you. We are looking at ordinance twenty-one twenty-four to repeal and replace the official zoning map related to Title Twenty of the Bloomington Municipal Code. So this petition will update the official zoning map in order to best apply the updated Unified Development Ordinance regulations. It works to locate the new M S, mixed-use student housing, parks and open space, R one and R four zoning districts that were new to the code to align the official zoning map with the goals of the comprehensive plan, rezoning some parcels to correct things like split-zone lots or those that no longer match existing or likely future uses on the site, rezoning a hundred and three of our planned unit developments to base zoning districts, and rezoning our mixed-use healthcare district to match the Bloomington Hospital Site Redevelopment Master Plan Report as along with rezoning our E M parcels to mixed-use employment. So an interactive map was created as part of the public hearing process last fall. Again, these are online and accessible for people to look at, and they indicate those areas which the new zoning districts that are proposed for the areas, and also a printable version has been online this whole time and is available. Included in this proposal as well is, I have a swipe map here, and you can see one of the largest changes is the gray areas that are currently in a lot of the southern part of the city. Those are our P U Ds, and many of them, as I mentioned before, a hundred and three, are being proposed to be rezoned. So as I mentioned, we have new zoning districts that came out in the update to the Unified Development Ordinance. The first is Parks and Open Space. You can see those green areas here on the right. Basically, city-owned property that is used for parks purposes used to be included in the institutional zoning district. The change, this change would allow them to have their own zoning district with regulations more appropriate specifically to the types of buildings and uses that are common on city-owned park property. Secondly, we have the mixed-use student housing zoning district. We looked at locations for mixed-use student housing by first starting with the goals of the U D O and the comprehensive plan. For example, the area designated as Gateway North in the comprehensive plan was identified as the appropriate location for increasing student housing. So that is along North Walnut here, and you can see we expanded to the west after the initial public outreach phase to incorporate some existing student housing that because of the age of the buildings and sites will very likely soon redevelop. We also identified areas east of, excuse me, west, immediately west of campus in this area here near Tenth Wood Lawn, and we removed a mixed-use student housing node that we had at Firdan Jordan after our public outreach process, and we added an area here to the east of the future hospital and learning, learning campus on the east side of town, again, where some, most of the developments in this area will age out in the lifetime of this U D O and could be appropriate for mixed-use student housing. The R four zoning district was also added to the Unified Development Ordinance with the code update. An R four district location map was obviously included in the public outreach draft identifying locations that staff felt met U D O and comprehensive plan goals. We took a lot of input on the R four locations and reduced the land area of where R four was being proposed by seventy-eight percent. Sixty-one percent of the parcels that had previously been identified as well were now removed. And what you see here are what remains. So these areas are P U Ds that have R four characteristics either in use or size of, size and dimensions of parcels, or additionally areas that are on the edges of established neighborhoods along near commercial corridors, such as here immediately east of Hillside and Henderson between the commercial corridor at Hillside and Henderson, excuse me, the commercial node at Hillside and Henderson and Walnut. Or they are surrounded by districts that are of higher intensity. So for example, this area here on South Washington is almost entirely surrounded by commercial and or multifamily, and so allowing for some intensification of the residential in those areas as well. R one residential large lot was a district that was added to the zoning code in the update and had needed to be mapped as well. You may recall in our discussion of removing R E from the text of the, of the zoning code that the R one districts that we are showing are basically those, a few from P U Ds, but mostly those that were existing R E. So you can see some here north of town and some one here down southwest of town. So again, this is about twenty parcels. I think it might be twenty-one, and these are focused on, these are our largest residential, but will allow for potentially some future subdivision. Not all of these will be eligible because of the dimensions that they currently have, but bringing these more in line with our other residential districts as opposed to the two-and-a-half-acre minimum lot size that was part of the R E zoning district. So we also had a handful of smaller changes that I kind of mentioned a bit ago. These we called the enhancement and adjustment rezones. We looked at base zoning parcels within the city, identified some, again, that didn't seem to kind of align with the goals of the comprehensive plan or those that were currently split-zoned, or that the character of the area had changed around them and the zoning didn't quite make sense anymore. And so we track those typically just within our regular work, so had a, a list of those that may need to be addressed and made some changes based on those. So these are changes to the zoning code that were made that are outside of either the P U D changes or the new zoning district changes. Everything else falls in this category. So a couple to highlight are that we added some, excuse me, that along the new seven-line location, some of this zoning was changed here to help support the intensification of that district there. We also changed some zoning down, you can see here on the south side of town, ooh, sorry, wrong way, along Morton again for potential redevelopment in those areas. And then our biggest land-wise change is our planned unit developments. So U D O and the previous U D O have written expectation into the P D, into the P U D regulations that P U Ds won't last forever. They'll be expired after certain thresholds are met, either full build-out, periods of inactivity, or not operating within the guidelines of the P U D. So we currently have one hundred and nineteen P U Ds in the city of Bloomington. We reviewed all of those P U Ds, looking at such data as initial year of approval, allowed uses underlying in surrounding zones last year of approved petition, if they had ever had any petitions done. And we identified a hundred and three of those that we are recommending to be rezoned. So those petitions fall in one of these categories here on the left where at least, excuse me, those P U Ds, where at least ninety-five percent has been built out or that they are considered abandoned. And we are proposing to put those to base zoning districts, so leaving sixteen of our existing P U Ds in place. Those P U Ds that are proposing to be left are, either have complicated regulations that are hard to match to our regular base zoning districts, or they have, are new enough that they are still under development, or they have properties in them that are currently being developed. So the P U D itself may be old, but there have been recent amendments that something within that P U D is currently or very recently under development. So rezoning the P U Ds really helps members of the public be able to more easily access information about their zoning. Some of these P U Ds are forty years old or older and have had many changes over the years, many amendments, and we find that it's much easier for a member of the public and also for staff to help them with base zoning districts and being able to understand the comparisons between them and finding uses and setbacks in a much easier manner than having to go to the historic data always to figure out what they can do, simple things that they can do on their property. Can they do additions? How big can their accessory structures be? Because each P U D is basically its own zoning code, and they all have different regulations, so you can't make any assumptions and have to go to each one every time. So there were two amendments that were approved by the plan commission. You see those already in the, already in the map that's at the beginning, and I just wanted to clearly mention that they were, the first one was just three fixes that staff had missed on the draft. And then the second one was a request for a portion of a P U D along Claris to be rezoned to mixed-use healthcare, and both of those were approved unanimously by plan commission. I can, let me check, just check my notes here briefly. One more moment, and then I'll be happy to take questions. We just wanted to clarify, just for those who don't know why we're doing a zoning map, this is the end of part of the overhaul of the ordinance and the, of the overall ordinance and the zoning map that was directed in the ordinances when we did the conversion map, when we did the first overhaul. We've been, again, working on that since October with our first public outreach council per state law. Just for those watching, have three options to adopt, reject, or take no action. And we, I am happy to answer any questions. Thank you.
Thank you for that presentation, Ms. Scanlon. Council questions? Councilmember Rallo.
Thank you, President Sims. Ms. Scanlon, regarding the conversion of P U Ds to some standard zoning, P U Ds have, require a demonstrable public good, and that provided the council, the P U Ds come to the council. So it provided the council with leverage to, for instance, preserve environmental features or to include affordable housing, include commercial, and so forth. So I, I've, I've been quite suspicious about giving up that, that ability. It definitely diminishes the council's involvement. So my question is, I mean, regarding Trinitas, for example, let's just give, let's just look at Trinitas. They're going forward with by right and they originally proposed affordable housing. Now it looks like they're, it's all multifamily. It's stated to be student housing, probably mostly will be. What are we giving up? Aren't we giving up our ability to say, for instance, achieve affordable housing with this change?
Those two aren't the same thing. I'll try to address your first question. So, or your first comment. Yes, P U Ds provide council with the opportunity to leverage common good. That's what they're for. So when the council in 1982 approved a P U D, they hopefully leveraged their weight to get what they could from that P U D. It was never the intention that the council in 2021 would also then be releveraging to let them, you know, add a use that maybe wasn't in the code at the time. That P U D was never intended to still be in place 40 years later. There's a time limit on how long P U Ds should be in place. So you still will have, you still will have the ability to, to leverage P U Ds however you see fit when new P U Ds come into play. So your second point about Trinitas at the former Kmart site is a little different. But yes, when they said they were going to come in as a P U D, they had shirets and said they were going to do lots of very interesting and positive things. When this council, along with the administration, approved the new code, they looked through that code and decided that they would try to build within those parameters instead and not do those things that they had originally said they were going to do. This council, as proposed by the administration, made changes just this last month to make that more difficult, to lower those thresholds so that we can either by right meet some of our goals because incentives will be used, or obviously the P U D option is still open. So I kind of get what you're circling or what you're saying, but those two things aren't, aren't directly related. If we let the old P U Ds become by right, most of the old P U Ds you don't see anyway. You're not leveraging anything from them. They're residential built out, they're entirely built out residential neighborhoods. They're not requesting anything. They are.
For instance, Renwick, for instance, yes.
Yes, old ones are more common, but yes, Renwick is not entirely built out, which is why it is not one of the ones that's proposed to be changed and also has very complicated regulations that aren't easily sent into our base districts. But yes, the other ones I was speaking of are more again, built out and the only, they're, putting them to base districts will allow those residents to be able to more easily do things that we see people requesting to do, putting in pools, you know, needing another setbacks, those types of things. And you and the council doesn't really lose anything in those situations because you don't see requests in those areas anyway.
What is the time expiration on P U Ds?
I believe it is three years. Let me call that up. I can pull that for you if you want to ask some.
Okay, that's sufficient. President Sims, you can go to someone else if you'd like. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Flaherty.
Yes, thank you, Ms. Scanlon, for the presentation. I had a sort of related follow up. And I think you kind of hinted at this with, with your description of Renwick as, as fairly complicated, not, not mapping well to a base zoning district in the, in the U D O. My question is essentially, I would imagine you looked at existing P U Ds and picked the, the base zoning district that most closely maps to whatever that zoning regulation in that particular P U D was. But my question is, if, if there were still discrepancies, what happens now? Are there uses in the P U Ds proposed to be rezoned to base districts that now have lawful nonconforming uses? Because those uses aren't allowed in the, in the base zoning district, for instance, or lot sizes or other things like that. What happens in those cases where there's still a point of conflict?
Yes. So if there are items such as uses or dimensional standards that do not meet the base zoning districts, then they would become lawful nonconforming.
Is, and is that, is that of concern at all and or is that very extensive? I know, or at least my, my impression is that as a general best practice, we shouldn't want to have a lot of lawful nonconforming uses.
Yes, that's correct. No, we do not think it's going to be extensive based on the research that we were able to do. But, you know, we can only do so much. We do think that we were able, when the P U Ds are written, most of the P U Ds were written. They identified, they were supposed to and often did identify base zoning districts from the code of whatever time they were written. So those districts over time have stayed fairly similar. So use wise, unless you're in a P U D that had very specific use restrictions, you're, we, we are able to kind of match those through time. But yes, it is possible that that will happen and then those will have to be treated as lawful nonconforming going forward.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Any more questions from council? Councilmember Smith and then Councilmember Scambler, sorry.
Thank you, President Sims. Ms. Scanlon, I, is there any negative impacts that? What, what's the pros and cons of that? I, I'm not sure I can fathom that.
Sorry, pros and cons of what? Lawful nonconforming?
No, when.
Oh, sorry.
We're changing the zoning from P U Ds to a zone. Is there any, what are the pros and cons? Is there, is there negatives for people who own property or businesses in those areas? I mean, is there, I don't, I don't think I understand what the, you know, pros and cons of it is.
Yeah, I think that's what Councilmember Flaherty is kind of getting at. Is there, are there some uses where they become lawful nonconforming if a use is existing there and then are those restricted? If you are lawful nonconforming, then there are only certain things you can do. You can go on in perpetuity, of course, with the use that you have, but for example, you can't expand. So that could, that is a risk. Again, because we put out the map in the fall, we did hear from quite a few property owners of mostly commercial properties and then worked with them on identifying districts that they felt were appropriate. We, so for example, a number of beauties along 37 or some of our older ones where that maybe don't see much current development, but have one or two, you know, empty lots. Those, we worked with those property owners to find districts that they felt could, could allow the type of development that they are anticipating in those areas and that we felt also met the comprehensive plan. So we tried to limit that possibility as much as possible. And I could think the main pro is just providing regularity and predictability for people who own property or are interested in property in the future, that they can, you know, find that information and, and know what, what is available and what's an option on those sites. And, you know, to miss, to Councilmember Rallo's point. And then if, if it's not what they want it to be, then they can, of course, always file for a plan unit development and then work with the administration and council to get those more tailored, tailored uses or development standards in that they would like.
Okay. Thank you for that explanation. I appreciate it.
Thank you, Councilmember Scambler.
Yes, thank you. Thank you, Ms. Scanlon. I was actually really impressed with a lot of the work you did with P U Ds. I happen to live in one of the 16 that didn't qualify for rezoning, but was impressed by what I saw there. What happens to the remaining P U Ds? Will there be an ongoing effort to see when they're ready to be rezoned?
Yeah. So, so to, back to Councilmember Rallo's question. A preliminary plan is considered abandoned if three years after that preliminary plan, no final plan has been in place or 10 years after the approval of the preliminary plan. If final plans have started, but there are sections that haven't been done. So in the, in the cases of the P U Ds that do exist now, they would be, we would be more looking at the standards that I had put up related to, we will monitor them if they become, for example, 95% built out and or reach an abandonment, an abandonment level, either the ones I just mentioned or of the ones I just mentioned. Then we will go forward with talking to you guys about whether or not those need to be rezoned.
Okay. And my question was, is that happening on an ongoing basis? Is it?
Oh, I'm sorry. Yes, we will be tracking those annually. That's something that we should be doing, correct?
Great, thank you. And was any thought given, or what kind of conversations were had around the notion of splitting existing P U Ds?
So. Great question.
If there was a P U D that part of it is all built out and has a certain kind of development and part of it isn't, was any conversation had around that?
Yes, many conversations were had around that, that question. And we were advised by the legal department that we should not be recommending splitting P U Ds. So that is, so for example, you see some P U Ds, like the Thompson P U D is so big and a lot of it is fallow. But around the edges of it, we do see, we have seen recent development and approvals, for example, the Habitat project on the southern end or all of the, the expansion and development happening at Catalent. So as a P U D as a whole, it has seen recent development. So we left it in place. We will, of course, we would, of course, entertain a particular rezones with particular property owners and P U Ds if they wanted to rezone out of them. That's an option that they have. But in the overall zoning map discussion, we were advised that we should not recommend splitting them.
Okay, that's helpful. And I have one additional question, Mr. President, but I can hold it if you want.
I think it's fine. We're right here.
Okay. I, I wish I could find a more elegant way to ask this question, but I'll just ask it. Are, are we, in all of the rezones of all these P U Ds, are we becoming P U D averse as a city?
Um, I hope, I don't know. I'm not quite sure. Most of the P U Ds are quite old. We still see P U Ds come forward. You all, again, with the help of the administration, just last year, changed the P U D requirements. I think if anything, if anything is to look at about whether or not we're P U D averse, we should look at our P U D regulations and see if we think they're, see if we think that they're friendly to development. Whether or not we leave old P U Ds on the map, I don't think points to whether or not we are P U D averse. P U Ds are supposed to be for interesting mixed use development. That's what they were created for, right? So that in areas where you maybe can't get to exactly what you're looking for with traditionally, the traditional way that base zoning districts were laid out, that you could propose a mix of them and then have uses be mixed in a way that they had gotten away from in zoning you know, earlier, when, when zoning had become popular. In Bloomington, we often started using P U Ds as a tool for single use. We have a lot of single use family residential, single family residential P U Ds. That's not really the best use for P U Ds. I don't know, as you know, to what Councilmember Rallo said, I don't know how much was being able to be leveraged when those P U Ds were put in. But now we see, we see them used kind of in a little bit of a different way. We try to get mixed use from them even when they're small. You know, like you mentioned, or I think Councilmember Rallo maybe mentioned Renwick or the Trinitas project on 17th Street. That is kind of a more traditional P U D, even on a small scale, when we had the Curry P U D at Longview and Pete Ellis, mixed use in the building, able to work towards some of the community goals, such as affordable housing and green building. That's what we're trying to utilize P U Ds for. And I don't think removing the old ones from the map makes us more averse. If we're worried about being averse, I think we should look at our regulations and see if we think they're either too friendly or not friendly enough.
Thank you. That's very helpful.
Thank you. Any further questions from council? Any further questions? Okay, moving to second round, Councilmember Rallo.
Thank you. Well, just to say that I think the P U D utility is proven at Hillside and Henderson, which is a number of P U Ds that really is the prototype village center, I think, for the community. But my question is about, way back in 2019, when R four was first proposed and described, I believe the question came from Councilmember Sterbaum, asking about what the nature of R four was, because it was undescribed at the time. In, in trying to drill down and find out what it would consist of, he asked if it would include neighborhoods, core neighborhoods. And he, and, and a number of us believe, we recollect that we were told by the consultant that, no, it would not include core neighborhoods, that it was a man, it was an area for urban redevelopment and so forth. So was that the case? And then did this designation, R four, then change? Because in the first iteration of R four, it consisted of quite an expansive area of, of core neighborhoods. Much reduced now, but could you comment on that? Was, was there a change made between what the developer, the consultant told us and what planning ended up revealing in October?
No, I don't, no, I don't believe so. So again, this is kind of two questions, but yes, some people did have said that they always thought that R four would only be used for new infill development, like such as at the hospital. But if you read the purpose of the R four district, it doesn't indicate that at all, which obviously, of course, is the language that went into the code and was presented by the consultant. Secondly, we've described this a number of times, but I'm happy to do it again, is when we put the map out in October, we wanted to try to start with, with a proposal for R four that was based on an analysis that we could describe and explain to how we got to that and say, we want to start here and then go from there and get comments. So that was why you saw what you saw. We obviously got tons of feedback, which was great. And then we made changes based on that. And we went back to, you know, what we heard a ton, which was the preference, you know, that, that R four should be on the arterials. It should be on the edges of these areas, not in the middle of neighborhoods. And so we went to arterial streets, we went to commercial nodes. We, it's intended to be a transition in most cases between something more, something more impactful, a larger, for example, mixed use district in between that and a primarily single family district like R three. And so we tried to locate those in those transitional areas. And then again, as I mentioned before, of course, also some P U Ds that had dimensional or use standards that were similar to the R four are also recommended to be rezoned.
Thank you for answering.
You're welcome.
Thank you. Do we have any further questions from council or staff? Okay, seeing none, we'll now go to the public for public comment. We'll remind everyone that if you, or please use raised hand function in Zoom to indicate your intention to speak publicly. You may also send a note through chat to our meeting hosts to indicate your intent to public speak. We would also ask that if there's more than one person on your device, that you please let us know that so we could acknowledge you properly. And public speakers will have a three minute time limit. I miss Lacy. Who do we have?
First, we have Greg Alexander, who should be able to unmute.
Hi, awesome. Thanks. My name is Greg Alexander. There are so many great aspects to this map, especially mixed student zoning and phasing out P U Ds. This map is the culmination of the U D O update process and represents just a ton of progress. But the reduced R four zone compared to the initial staff proposal is disappointing. But the reduced R four zone compared to the initial staff proposal is disappointing. Staff had proposed that my neighborhood, Maple Heights, would mostly be zoned R four, but now that's been reduced to basically just the edge along College Avenue. To make the original proposal, staff looked at the lots in the neighborhood and they saw, for example, that the lots on my block are all on tenth acre lots. That means they're more or less conforming with R four, but they're undersized compared to R three. So they said, obviously, these tiny lots have not ruined the neighborhood, so the nearby blocks should be zoned the same as the historical development on my block. I want to draw your attention to three different lots within a couple hundred feet of my house to showcase how this map will limit my neighborhood. Across the street from me on one side is a house built on the corner of a fifth acre lot, so half his lot is empty. Under R three zoning, he cannot subdivide that lot, but under R four zoning, he would be allowed to subdivide that lot and build a whole other house in what is currently just his underutilized side yard. Across the street from me on another side is a house owned by an old man. Up until very recently, he rented out his basement to a family. Yes, it was an owner-occupied duplex. But as he's aged, he seems to have abandoned the apartment, so I'm concerned about what will happen to that house when a new owner comes in. Will they be able to keep that duplex or will that housing simply evaporate? And the answer is that side of the street is zoned R four because it's closer to College Avenue. So the new owner will have the easy option to keep it as a duplex. Thank you. And just down the block from me is a regular fifth of an acre lot, but on it is a seven-unit apartment building. These tiny one-bedroom apartments are very affordable market rate rentals today. I've got to point out, they were originally built by profit-hungry developers. They're an example of the magic of middle-sized housing. Developers at that scale have incentives to make naturally affordable units to cram in the largest number of tiny low-rant apartments in a small lot. But someday that lot will be redeveloped, because there's a lawful non-conforming structure, only the barest maintenance is allowed by law. And when it sells, because it is zoned R three, that lot will only be able to have a single house on it. And to even put two units on it, they'll have to jump through all these hoops. There's a very real risk that seven affordable units will be replaced with just one luxury, single-family house. There are so many buildings like this in my neighborhood, and if that happens, it would be devastating to the neighborhood I love. If it was zoned R four, they could at least subdivide it into two lots, each of which may have a plex on it, and we could maintain some of that residential density. We could keep some of that valuable housing. I don't know what you should do, though, because I don't think you have a whole bunch of options on this map. Thank you so much for your time.
Thank you for your comments. What do we have next, Miss Lacy?
Next, we have, um, a person with, oh. They, they've lowered their hand. I'm going to assume that that was intentional. Next, we have Jean Simonean, who should be able to unmute.
Hi, this is Jean Simonean. Um, I'd like to echo Councilmember Rollo's memory. I not only remember the consultant stating that R four was for yet to be under, yet, as yet undeveloped land. But I also remember Scott Robinson echoing that, might have been a plan commission or a council in two thousand nineteen. In the recent plan commission hearings, plan commissioners admitted that these areas were chosen for R four because of their high rental activity. In other words, their high profitability. When I bought my house in, in the area of East Side that's proposed to be R four, this wasn't always so. It was sixty percent owner-occupied. I would point out, there is no multifamily nor commercial entities bordering my area. There is a church, as there is a church central to the East Side neighborhood, common to the historic pattern. There are a couple of bus stops nearby. This is an area where Third Street narrows to one lane in each direction, signifying the transition to a neighborhood zone. Most of the lots are far larger than the small size designated for R four. This is an undermining of a neighborhood that will take, I think, about twenty percent of our neighborhood. An undermining for profit, and I vehemently disagree with this inappropriate characterization of my area as urban in scale, scope, or function. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments. Who do we have next, Miss Lacy?
Next, we have a person with the screen name Cheyenne's iPhone, who should be able to unmute and state their full name for the record.
Oh, good evening. My name's Cheyenne Riker. Um, I'm general counsel for a company called Haven Health Management. We manage and own the properties along First Street. We own, um, all the properties on the north side of First Street from, um, one thousand West First Street all the way to Walker. And then we own and operate all the properties on the south side of First Street from nine oh one West First Street all the way west to one thousand West First Street. And, you know, the current, the property is currently zoned as M H. The proposal would, would rezone the whole entire area, but only the area, interestingly, in that area, only the area that we in particular operate. So along First Street, the proposal is that you would rezone only what we own, interestingly. Well, Indiana Center for Recovery is our company, we operate that. During zoning meetings in the past, we've had arguments that that should stay with McDoll Gardens, and now it seems like that's what the city's direction is. But what doesn't make sense is that we don't operate like McDoll Gardens. We don't, we're not even close to McDoll Gardens. There's only a small strip of R three zone that's proposed that would connect us with McDoll Gardens. So it, logistically, it makes little sense. Second, I think it's really important to understand inverse condemnation. Our property and our, our investment-backed expectation, when we bought these properties, was that we would be able to expand into medical use. We bought it in a medical zone, it's currently a medical zone, and now it's going to be rezoned to effectively substantially reduce the value of our properties and all our holdings along First Street. Which is seriously concerning, considering the fact that, as Ms. Scanlon mentioned, the city reached out to a number of companies, one of which was not us. We did not have a say in that discussion. We weren't offered an opportunity to discuss it. It was just simply thrown out there, and I explained that, uh, we were very concerned about that at the planning level. So it doesn't make a lot of sense from our perspective that you would change this zone from its current use, which is medical, into something that it will never be. We actually, we, we demolished a number of buildings in that area in anticipation that we would be able to use it for medical use. We got authority from the Historic Commission and they granted it. We demolished the buildings and now the city is asking us to, uh, to change the zone. We would respectfully request that you would deny the zoning change and go back to the drawing board to ensure that what you're doing isn't devaluing properties all over the city, which is what I expect will happen. So just Google inverse condemnation, and I think you'll learn a lot about what the city will be doing if they, if they accept the zoning change. I appreciate your time.
Thank you for your comments. Take care, Miss Lacy.
Next, we have Jean Lennon, who should be able to unmute.
Hello, excuse me, hello, this is Jean Lennon. I just wanted to make a brief comment about, um, an area proposed to be R four, uh, north of Hillside. Between Palmer and Walnut. I think that, uh, I support the idea of R four along the arterials of the neighborhood. Hillside in that area is, is particularly difficult for pedestrians and Wilson Street. Between Palmer and Grant is very narrow and, uh, the road, I would imagine, is substandard width. I don't see a lot of issues with, you know, increased density up to maybe the R, uh, the, the quadplex. But, um, having the larger, uh, multifamily buildings in that area is something I'm not sure fits in with the character of that section of the neighborhood. That's all. Thanks.
Thank you very much. Miss Lacy?
There are no more raised hands presently, and I do not have any more, um, messages in the chat.
Okay, thank you. Give it just another second. A reminder, everyone, if you would like to public speak, please indicate by using the raised hand function on Zoom or send a message via chat to our meeting hosts, indicating your intent to speak publicly. You will be allowed three minutes. Um, I think I see about two hands now.
I do, I do as well. The first is Pam Weaver, who should be able to unmute.
Hi, thanks. Um, I, I'm frankly really, um, I, I'm not really sure whether I want to, would like to ask you to support this or not support this. I'm super disappointed, um, in the, how few are for, uh, the, how small the R four zones are. Councilmember Rollo, for example, characterized the corner of Henderson and Hillside as an urban center. And previously, he, um, held out urban centers as, as something that Bloomington should, should adopt and support. So I'm really, really confused. An urban center to be successful only thrives when there are enough residents to support the center. And yet, there's been so much opposition to, in this case, for example, increased density in Bryant Park, because it's a core neighborhood. Um, and these two thoughts are directly in conflict and confusing me. So, um, now that the R four zones have been heavily reduced and more compromise has been made with regard to building duplexes, we're looking at no way to increase density anywhere near this urban center. That I'm, I'm using as an example. Not to mention the opportunity to increase density near so many great services like buses and park and the elementary school. I mean, if I was the queen of all, I'd add R four zoning in the Bryant Park neighborhood at a minimum all along Hillside and all along Henderson. To support and encourage that urban center. Um, and get more people access to the services that are all around Bryant Park. I can't speak to other core neighborhoods. I'm not closely familiar with them. So, um, you know, what am I asking you to do? I really don't know. I mean, I wish you could say no and go back to the drawing board and add more R four at this point, because I think compromise was made with that. Based on the non amended language, and now it's like double compromise. So I'll just leave you with that and, you know, thank you for your consideration about what I've said. And, you know, whether you should vote more and go no and go back or vote yes to just get things going. Thanks a lot.
Thank you for your comments. Who do we have next, Miss Lacy?
Next, we have Sarah Mosier, who should be able to unmute.
Hi, can you hear me?
I sure can. You have three minutes. Thank you.
Thank you. My name is Sarah Mosher, and I'm a homeowner in the Prospect Hill neighborhood. Before that, I rented for several years in the McDoll Gardens neighborhood. And thank you for allowing me to speak. I guess I just want to comment that I, I would support any efforts to add density to my neighborhood. And the other core neighborhoods, well, I can only speak for my own. I think it's important to be able to add any of those opportunities where possible. And it does seem, I kind of agree with what Pam just said, that it does seem like some of the compromises that have been made have, have weakened that to a certain extent. But if we have to start somewhere, if this is a way to even add some of them, then it seems like something is better than nothing, you know? But, um, just to comment on, uh, people who are talking about whether something fits in with the character of a neighborhood. I'm just, that makes me think of, of, well, that kind of language is often used to basically keep things just as they are. And we're not going to be able to move forward as a community, um, if nothing changes, you know? And if that means that the character, quote unquote, of our neighborhoods has to change, and my neighborhood has to change, then I say, then it should change, you know? Even if that means it's going to look different than it does now or when I bought my house, I would still be in favor of increasing the density around here. So thanks very much.
Thank you for your comments. Do we have any more? Waiting, Miss Lacy?
There are no raised hands, and I do not have any messages in the chat.
Okay, thank you. Then we'll now go back to council for final comment or slash questions. Uh, Councilmember Boland and then Councilmember Flaherty.
Yes, uh, could staff, uh, explain to us, even though some of us may be familiar already, the, um. Our ability to amend this ordinance? Ms. Scanlon or Mr. Robinson, can you explain what it would take for us to make a change to the map if one or more of us saw fit to do so at this moment?
Oh, Scott's here, never mind.
Well, it, it could be any member of plant staff, whoever wants to.
Mr. Robinson is preparing to speak. Thank you.
Okay.
Uh, this is Scott Robinson, Director of Planning and Transportation. Yeah, I'd be happy to explain that. You, you have three options, uh, per state code tonight. Uh, you can either adopt it, it will become effective upon when the mayor signs it. You can reject it, which all the changes, uh, will not take effect. Or if you, uh, do not take action, uh, it will become effective ninety days upon the date at which it was, uh, certified. I don't have that date before me. Uh, so tonight, uh, council does not have an opportunity to amend the map. Uh, Plan Commission did, however, have that opportunity, however, they chose not to, uh, amend the map at that point in time. Excuse me. Um, so I think that answers your question, Councilmember Boland. If not, um.
It's close. Yeah, thank you for that, but it's close, but, uh, under normal circumstances, something that comes from Plan Commission. We can amend it and then it goes back to Plan Commission, but that's not the case with the map. Is that correct?
That's correct. State, state code has a different process for the map than the, the text amendments for the U D O. There are two separate processes in state code. So the map has a different noticing requirement than the text, and there's a different process for the map than there is for the text amendment. So once the recommendation for the map, um, came out, a plan, Plan Commission, uh, council only has those three options, uh, to take at this point in time.
So just to be perfectly clear, um, if the council were to reject this map, uh, then the administration would have to start from scratch the process of remapping. The, uh, the city zoning-wise.
Yeah, so the, the, basically what the map that is in place right now, the conversion map would be the map that would be in place. There would be some consequences of that. Um, there was a lot of discussion about the PUDs. So all the PUDs would not be rezoned to the base zoning, as Ms. Scanlon described. The hospital site, the redevelopment site, um, those would be retained at the medical mixed-use healthcare zone. So none of those areas would be rezoned as part of the hospital master plan. Uh, that would jeopardize the core administration, uh, building that we're trying to reuse for a low income, low income housing tax credit with a partner. There's also the R, uh, E zone that, uh, essentially was removed from the U D O. So all those zones, uh, no longer exist, um, so that would create some, uh, conflict. So there would be some consequences if council were to reject.
Can you, uh, explain what you mean by the low-income tax credit building that the core building would be converted to? Like, why would turning this down affect that project?
So, uh, as you know, the city issued an R F I, a request for information, and we entertained, I believe, uh, six proposals, interviewed three, uh, development partners, and we're in the process of negotiating that right now. One of the criteria for either the four percent or nine percent low-income housing tax credit is the zoning has to be in place that supports the use. The mixed-use healthcare does not permit residential zoning. So that would jeopardize, uh, their application process. I believe, uh, the nine percent application is due either June or July of this year. So, um, they would forego a full year of that. And as you know, the, the transition ownership structure from the hospital to, to Bloomington, uh, there's a tricky timeline for when that property is shifted over to the city and which, uh, involves demolition and other things. So it, it would really complicate other reuse of that building if that decision were made.
Thank you for that extensive explanation. I appreciate it.
Thank you. Councilmember Flaherty?
Uh, yes, I wanted to follow up briefly on the, the comment from a member of the public, uh, I believe an attorney, uh, representing a number of. Property owners or a single property owner along First Street, um, who had anticipated using, uh, their property for, uh, in accordance with the medical, um, zoning district. As was just sort of explained, there's not a whole lot that we can do about it, you know, at the council level right now. I, I wondered, A, was this brought up when the, um, map was before Plan Commission at all? And, um, I guess regardless of what the answer to that is, uh, wondering, B. What recourse would that owner have if they wanted to, to reconsider or, or, uh, seek some recourse in the future? My guess would be that they would have to petition for a rezone and we would duly consider that at, at Plan Commission and City Council. But, uh, if someone from staff could answer those two questions, that would be great.
Yeah, I think the first question, thank you, uh, Councilmember Flaherty. Part of the, the delay in the mapping process, um, was contingent upon the, the hospital redevelopment planning process. was contingent upon the the hospital redevelopment planning process that took place over the last year. And that process had concluded, and we wanted to implement the recommendations of that study. So that's what's in the zoning map is the recommendations from that. There was a lot of outreach and and feedback through that process. So that's, you know, how we folded that process into the rezoning of that particular area of the map. Your second question, anybody can request to re have their property rezoned moving forward. Since this was a city led effort, city wide effort, we have to follow different processes than an individual would. So that property owner certainly has a right to request for a rezone and go through that process.
Thank you.
Thank you. Any further questions from council members or comments? I'm sorry, comments? Or questions? Okay. Councilmember Olin.
If we're in comments now, I just wanted to make a brief comment.
Well, we 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 are in comments, but you said you had a question.
No, no, no. No, no, I asked a question already.
Early, I know where.
Okay.
Yes, you're in comments. Please go ahead.
Okay, thanks. The last time that I voted on a map like this was two thousand and six. I'll never forget the night. It was December of oh six, and I sat down next to Councilmember Sturbaum, and I said to him, this is so, the U D O has been so complicated that I feel like we've missed something in the maps. The map was very complicated then. He agreed with me, and eventually we found out that we had missed something. It's a very difficult thing. But in contrast, fifteen years later, this map is not as complicated. I think that planning staff has done a a really good job of sort of consolidating, explaining the changes that are being made here. It was, I want I want to thank Ms. Scanlon in particular for a well organized presentation and staff in general for kind of a coherent new map. I do generally agree with some of the members of the public who said there wasn't enough R four. But I think that the map itself is a very good first step. I think that in the same way that the gentleman representing the the properties over by the hospital are blindsided by it, we was, you know, blindsided by these changes. I do think that the new U D O and the map provide for a better ability to address these issues. And I think one thing we've all seen in the past two to four years, especially with the U D O, is that, yes, we shouldn't sit on it for another fifteen years and wait to change it then. We should be addressing it more often. This should give a sucker to anyone who thinks that the U D O or any asset of the map needs to be changed. There is a long and extensive process to make these changes, but it's a duly prescribed process by statute. And it is the kind of process that is intended to get public input as extensive as possible. So I have confidence that if there need to be some changes made, such as through rezones, that, you know, and and that's something that the council comes to council as surely as P U Ds or changes to Title twenty do. So I'm confident that we will be able, as a community, to make those changes as we see fit and more often than once every fifteen years. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Olin. We are still in council final comments. Do we have any other council members? Councilmember Flaherty?
Yes, thank you. I wanted to say thank you to staff, of course, and the Plan Commission and members of the public who engaged with the mapping process for all your work and and thought thoughtfulness as as we work through this. I think there's a lot of really good things about updating a panoply of old P U Ds to a base zoning district. I know the administrative burden with with planning and developments is quite large, and we had very quite a lot of them. That said, I think I think Councilmember Rallo brings up good points, and I think there's a balance to be struck between creating certainty for developers in the future as well as strategically using the P U D process to help address gaps. So I think that's something we can continue to revisit with the text of the U D O and guidance on planning unit developments going forward. I thought Greg Alexander had a really great comment and highlighted some challenges and issues with kind of scaling back what the R four district is really meant to be, which is which is an urban mixed mixed housing type residential zone. That very much does match the historic form of all of our, you know, quote unquote, core neighborhoods or pre World War Two neighborhoods. They're they're full of a mix of housing types, and and if we were to apply the the R four district by its description and lot size, logically, it would be sort of covering all of those neighborhoods. And and he pointed out some of the some of the things that happen and the disincentives for providing more affordable housing types when you when you really peel that back and lots redeveloped potentially only into luxury, single family homes as opposed to more affordable mixed housing types. I think that's something that can be revisited and thought about critically in the context of text amendments in the future, too. I've talked about lot subdivisions being needed to be needing to be more viable through smaller lot minimums. I know at least one prominent opponent of of the duplex amendment is a proponent of subdividing corner lots in in older gridded neighborhoods so that another small single family home can go up on that extra back half of the lot fronts on the street, et cetera. So I think that's something that we can explore to help mitigate some of the challenges that Mr. Alexander pointed out. A note about village centers as well. Ms. Weaver made a good comment about that. I I think that's something we can continue to develop and revisit, both in the context of this map and housing plans that we develop. There was a high level concept plan from two local architects, which I I noted that I agreed with in principle, though disagreed with its incompatibility with with missing middle housing elsewhere. But I think examining something like five minute and ten minute pedestrian sheds surrounding these village centers could be a really good avenue for considering how 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 these zones could 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 enhance village centers going forward in the future. So I look forward to revisiting both the map and and the text of the U D O regularly over time and look forward to working with staff on on what that process may look like. So thanks again.
Thank you, Councilmember Flaherty. Final comments from fellow council. Okay. Councilmember Rallo.
Thank you, President Sims. Well, just referring back to the initial R four map. It was just, it wasn't a map. It was it was undesignedated. But it was described originally, not including core neighborhoods. And then it came in a very expansive form as originally proposed when the public reacted reacted quite negatively to it in the fall. And it was scaled back significantly. Now only about one quarter of what its original area was. There was, and then when it was scaled back, it came wedded with this conditional use in R one, R two, and R three. That's when that was initiated. So there there's clearly was a decision at some point made to repeal the council's resolve back in twenty nineteen to not use upzoning in what I would call kind of a broad brush, rather reckless fashion. So I'm quite dismayed by the process, which I've indicated already. Then again, I know that this is a front loaded process, and so we can amend the maps. So I have to acknowledge that worse maps are possible if we send it back to the Plan Commission. So at this point, I may vote yes, but I'm not sure. Thanks.
Thank you. We have any other final comments from council? Seeing none, are we ready for the question? Will the clerk please hold the roll for this twenty one dash twenty four?
Yes, Councilmember Sims?
Yes.
Flaherty?
Yes.
Piedmont Smith?
Yes.
Smith?
Yes.
Sandberg?
Yes.
Rallo?
No.
Olin?
Yes.
Rosenbacher?
Yeah.
Scambolory?
Yes.
Thank you all, and that is adopted eight to one. And now, in the agenda, we'll move on to matters of council schedule. Ms. Lacy?
Let's see. I believe that there is a allocation meeting for the Jack Hopkins Social Services Committee is next Tuesday. Shoot, sorry, guys. May the eighteenth, beginning at six P M. And then there is a regular session for council on Wednesday, the nineteenth, beginning at six thirty.
Okay, so anything else? Would this be part? Well, no, I guess there is something that's going on with the Public Safety Committee, but the CAPS Commission, but that's probably not part of council schedule. So, okay, thank you. All right, thank you very much. Okay, it seems that we have concluded our business this evening, thankfully, and thankful to you all. I move that we adjourn.
I'll make the motion.
Thank you.
We adjourn this evening.
Second.
So sorry to usurp that, Mr. Parliamentarian. Thank you. See how anxious I am. Been properly moved and seconded. Do we have any opposition or objections to adjourn? Seeing none, thank you all. Thank you for your patience and again, your time. Have a good night, and at the very latest, we'll see you next Wednesday.